Welcome to the March twenty eighth meeting, the the Finance Investment and Parking Committee meeting. We call the meeting to order three P M. First on the agenda is to approve the February twenty eighth minutes. Do I have a motion? Are there any amendments out there for those minutes?
No, and I moved to approve the February twenty eighth minutes as presented.
So move. All right, next on the agenda. Thank you. We have Melinda Monroe to discuss the M Park contract amendment.
Thank you so much for having me, and I guess I will start out with a little brief history. In twenty nineteen, the city extended this agreement through December thirty one, twenty twenty two. And the agreement is currently operating on a short term extension through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. And the city now would like to extend the agreement another two years and eight months with some administrative updates to the contract. Including the recognition of a parking enforcement vehicle that would be provided to by to update regular enforcement practices in the downtown core. We also have some updates, administrative updates to the exhibits, C, F, and G. And the cost in the change of service remains within the twenty twenty three budget.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Um, do we have a copy of that? I'm sorry, I'm looking here at what Mike sent. Do we have a copy of that contract to review?
I. Yeah, we do not. In your packet, we can forward to you actually out right now. It was uploaded in Munich code and we pulled it. So I was thinking you might have had a copy, but we can get that to you. And we're going to go walk through the two, the two changes are very subtle, what's in the agreement. So if you want to go and send that to them, maybe electronically, Melinda, and then the housekeeping items. Uh, we can kind of walk through each of those. One is defining what is the downtown core and calling out kind of the boundaries. So where they, where we ask them to enforce. Any other one, I believe it's overtime has to do with what Monday you can speak to that one in a minute. Uh, is the other administrative change again, very, very more descriptive changes than anything else, but uh, we'll send that Sunday guarantee. The big change is the term. We're trying to have it end on twelve thirty one instead ending at Martin March. That's why the two years and eight months. We're extending it off of March and just finishing out the the last year of the contract.
Okay, and that's to align with our.
Yeah, I'm aligned with budget, allow us some work commitments rather be on a calendar year. There is no rush. We want to get this in front of. For council, the last session, but with the extension that went through June, there's no reason to rush it, no reason. And then we have plenty of time for questions and council to be comfortable. Moving forward with the enforcement contract we have. So there's plenty of time like you said, we have a temporary agreement in place to continue the contract through June. So there's, we've got a few months ahead of us, so.
Thank you. I didn't mean to jump ahead of you there. Eric, you have any questions?
Yes, um, no worries. So I read the contract on it was in the study session for last week and then got pulled. And the main concern I had was, why are we providing M park a car? And then after answering that, why are we letting M park maintain it? Because I would think a city owned vehicle should be maintained or by city employees to make sure it's actually maintained. Uh, if you give me a vehicle to use and I'm not an employee, I'm really not going to be that thoughtful as far as changing oil and taking care of the vehicle, whereas I had on, I had ownership. So it's kind of puzzled. On the clause in the contract that provided that. And what kind of vehicle? Are we talking about one of those cab type scooters? Are we talking about an actual car?
Sure. And so they currently drive a Y R S and that has our L P R system on it. It is owned by the city. Um, and they do maintain it and carry the insurance that covers that vehicle, the primary insurance that covers that vehicle. Um, and so that is sort of the reason, the recommended reason that they would be responsible to maintain. Um, because their insurance is the primary insurance. So if their employee has a accident in that vehicle. Um, it will be covered by their insurance. Their that insurance is the primary and our insurance is non contributory on that. Um, so it was recommended that we have them maintain that vehicle. Um, the second vehicle that we're purchasing is a, the manufacturer is go for. And it's kind of like a golf court card type, you know, traditional parking security vehicle, but it is roadworthy. Um, it does have three wheels, but it has seat belts. Um, there's a variety of things that make it roadworthy and allow us to use it in the downtown core, but you aren't going to see us driving it on the freeways. It's just going to be pretty much within the downtown core and on the, um, you know, not going to be driving down three oh five. Or going down, you know, sixteen or anything with it. Um, but it does qualify for, for, uh, for, you know, street worthy. Patrol uses.
Yeah, if you've been to the branch or they operate one, they have the, you know, meter, meter cars, I can't remember what they're called.
Yeah, yeah.
Efficiency, those, those types of vehicles when they're actually doing downtown chalking instead of walking the streets, those actually can reach out chalk along the way. Where our L P R vehicles more for drive it on the street, capital plates, um, much more efficient for downtown patrols, um, when they are actually chalking and doing enforcement manually.
Okay, so those vehicles are called low speed vehicles, just for the record, the ones that can operate on a road that thirty five miles or less.
Thank you.
And can we put that in the contract purchase of a low speed vehicle? Otherwise, it kind of implies that we're going to buy them a car. I don't know. There's, I'm a little confused on that. The total years that we currently have, is that in good condition? We don't need to provide them with a, a new car? Is that correct?
Well, we actually are scheduled to replace that in twenty twenty four. Um, it was these ten years old when we put it in service with them. Um, so we're actually planning to schedule to replace that. And these, both of these vehicles are recorded as city assets. Um, so they are driving city assets, but that was also kind of done on purpose as well. Um, just if for any reason we needed to use those ourselves, we can easily do that. Um, so it was, it was really kind of recommended that they maintain it and they carry the insurance on the vehicles since their employees are driving. Um, but we maintain the ownership of that vehicle.
Yeah, last discussion, last discussion with the R S was they gave us a proposal for them to go purchase a vehicle and have us then work with the contract. Now, obviously that came with a different price tag. The vehicle we had in place was the Y R S that was going to be surplus. That was still was in good drivable condition, just didn't really fit our fleet, very small. I don't know if you've seen it. You've seen the Y R S, uh, myself and Hans drove that vehicle to Renton once and got laughed at out of my neighborhood with her shoulder to shoulder, very small vehicle, didn't really fit anybody's needs. It's more of an administrative car. But still, it's still low miles, so runs well, definitely good for a vicinity vicinity vehicle. And so the, the idea where it was to keep our, our quality vehicle within the city and allow them to operate that vehicle, ensure it, maintain it. And they keep the use of it. We will evaluate it before we surplus it and go forward with another vehicle just to purchase. If that vehicle is still viable and useful, we'll look at the mileage, we'll look at the maintenance records. So going forward.
Um, thank you, Eric. Do you have any other questions?
Well, I'm just trying to recall the contract in my head. I could have sworn it said, maintain. Purchase and maintain, purchase a vehicle. So now we're talking two vehicles, so.
So it should be the go for is the new vehicle we had in our, our budget for this year to buy. So when cities budgeted to purchase. And twenty twenty three was the go for, and now it'll be a parking vehicle that they'll operate and then maintain the Y R S that's existing.
Okay, and a go for is what it's called, G O.
Yeah, the brand, the company is called Go For. It used to be Cushman. Cushman used to make them.
Oh, I see.
But we'll call it the, what'd you call it? The low speed.
L S V.
We're going to call it an L S V from going forward. So the L S V is what's new to the, to our parking program.
Okay, so I can look this up on the internet, a go for?
Yes.
Is this electric or gas? Which is a mother?
Uh, it is electric.
There you go. Okay, interesting. All right. So yeah, if you could update the contract to reflect that, because it just says a vehicle on the contract. And then help me out here, isn't the auditor doing a? Review of our contract? And if so, why are we extending this for? Again, I don't have in front of me, but it's like a year or two term. Why not just have it through June and see what the report is and look, get our request for proposal? And bid from.
Yeah, we have been in contact with the auditor, the audit committee regarding what audit they were going to do, what they were looking at with the parking enforcement contract. Um, so the recommendation, I think from the committee to the auditor was to hold until we entered a new agreement and then they would do a historical analysis of parking, of the part, the parking contract, I believe. That's, that's what I've been told. Um, so they're kind of on hold.
Okay, and so how long is this contract going to go for?
Two years and eight months. So what's the expiration date? It'd be twenty, wait, is it twenty six?
Why so long?
Typically, the two, we extended it to get on the fiscal calendar instead of going out to March. Um, so that's why more than two years typically it's been a two year agreement or three year agreement.
You can simply extend it to twelve thirty one, twenty three and go out for contracts, go out for bid.
Uh, we definitely could propose that, um, talking with M park, uh, not, uh. When they're staffing and putting, putting emphasis, uh, you know, with their, their business model, less than a one year term. I don't know how interested they'd be, maybe, uh, but we could, we could propose it. Typically, they're looking for at least a two year agreement, um, two or three year agreement.
So you're telling me that this one expired twelve thirty one, twenty two, and then we extended it. Initially through June, and now this is for another two year and a half period.
Yeah, I was trying to get a full, a full, a full new contract.
Okay, I get that.
Yeah, it was originally through the end of March and they, they went and agreed to extend it through June while we kind of worked through the semantics of the agreement, knowing new council, private law discussion.
All right, who are the competitors in the downtown Bremerton area? It used to be Diamond Park and do they still exist?
They still exist, yes.
Are there any other competitors that could, that you would foresee that would bid on this contract?
Um, there may be, um, a couple of years ago, I did explore that possibility, so I would have to, um, put that out. Just see what is current.
So when you came up with these terms, did you look at comps? Or did you just say this is a continuation basically of the existing contract?
Um, so I do have two comps that I looked at, actually the city of Redmond and the city of Roseford, Oregon, that are really kind of similar to us. Um, I would say that as far as the cost, uh, we are competitive, um, and this is a competitive. You know, contract price compared to theirs. Um, it's not exactly the same. It's hard to make an apple to apple comparison with their, with those two cities. And how they're enforcing. So, um, I don't have like an hourly rate comparison. I can maybe dig a little deeper into that regards, but. Um, I did do a comparison to. Using city staff for this, and this is a, there is a significant savings in that regards.
Thank you. Is there anything wrong with, uh? Showing this contract to potential competitors and saying, by the way, the city council is considering this, can you beat this? Is there anything wrong with doing that?
Um, I would have to run that through legal, um, before I did that, um, but. It's possible that there's no issue with it. Um, I'm just probably want to run that through legal to make sure, or make sure we don't have any. You know, protection clauses, but I don't think that would be. I think most of our contracts, this contract, surely the way it is currently, I don't know if a draft contract, but at least the. You know, current contract could likely just be shared.
I, I know for professional services for engineering or stuff like that, you're not supposed to do that, but I would think for these type of services, you could. So that's just a question I'd like answered. And then, um. The other thing is, again, I'm just going off a recollection of reading the packet last week. Uh, it talks about costs and of course, uh, the revenues come in are going to be variable depending on the enforcement and the infractions. Thereof, but in general, are we making money? Are we gonna, if this terms are basically the same that we've had in the last couple of years? Are we projected to make money or is this contract going to cost money out of the general fund?
Um, this contract is revenue generating. Um, in the last three years, we have actually all three years, the contract cost has generated revenue. Um, even in twenty twenty, things were down significantly. Um, I would say that this year, um, we are moving back towards where we were in twenty nineteen. Um, in twenty nineteen, we had gross revenue around four and thirty five thousand. Um, and the contract at that time was at three fifty and we have maintained, um, maintained that contract cost for the last three years. This projection will bring us up to three ninety eight, um, but we also projecting revenue of four hundred and twenty five thousand in citations next year. Um, and I would say we're on track, um, for our, our citation revenue this year. So, as well as our garage.
Yep.
So overall, our overall revenue from the parking system definitely is generating revenue.
We operate, we operate the parking system out of a special revenue fund, out of the parking fund itself, and it's, it's been self substantiated since.
Yeah.
Last so many years without any additional need to help.
It's a little disappointing. If I was a private parking lot owner, I would expect to take the majority of the revenue versus whoever servicing my fee boxes and doing the enforcement. I, I mean, you're talking about like a margin of less than ten percent. That's tough. That's really. I understand they're enforcing parking on the street where there's no charges. I get it. I'm just thinking aloud is like, if this was just a, a commercial lot, I'd be laughing at you guys going, come on, really?
Probably be out of business. We'd be out of business.
Okay, all right, okay. Um, it's interesting. Okay, that's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. So when you say ten percent, do you mean that, um, that's how much revenue minus the cost of the program, the contract?
That's our margin. Yeah, and.
It's not, it's not actually four hundred and twenty five revenue. Um. It's before, it's, it's revenue prior to the cost of the contract. Am I understanding that correctly? So that's gross. So about. So less than a hundred K, right? So we're talking forty, like thirty five, forty thousand dollars revenue generated after the cost of the contract?
Um, from our enforcement only. Um, the overall parking fund just generate more than that, but that's just our, our enforcement.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand that. And, uh, just on the record, uh, why was this pulled from last week's studies from our study session?
I'll, I'll jump in that. So I, I recommend to pull it, uh, to pull it, talk with council president, uh, talk with the mayor. Um, just, just for this, the, because we're able to extend through June, we didn't want to feel like we were rushing the council to make a decision on this because the deadline.
It was a media agenda last week.
It was, it was on, yeah, he had the three thirty, three thirty one deadline of the original contract. We, we didn't want, you know, we had the answer to tell you, it was, it was extended through June, but we didn't want to rush the council. So we felt like the best way, since we've got the approval to go through June. Hold it off the state session, run it through finance committee, or create a normal process.
Okay. I, I really don't have any other questions. Eric generated some really great questions about this and that's, um. That'll give you a little taste of what's to come, right? So, uh, what do you need from us? This is the information only or just a head nod to move forward to study session as it is?
Just a head nod. We're kind of trying to fill out the questions you might have. Uh, we do have a proposal, uh, option to, if you had specific questions regarding, um, M Park themselves or how they operate, Harold from Reef. Uh, would be willing to be there. I kind of leaned away from that because we're actually talking about awarding a contract, but we wanted to see what the committee thought about that. So that was my question, the committee. Would you like any representative from their company there, uh, to be able to ask specific questions about their operation? Uh, they've had change in, uh, kind of overall. Um, organization, um, at a higher level with, with their parent company, but, um, that was, that was it.
Okay, I see Michael jumped in here. Hi, Michael. Uh, we're talking about the M Park contract. It was pulled from last week's agenda. You just heard the, the explanation for that. Do you have any questions specifically about the M Park? Contract renewal?
Yeah, no.
Okay, um, are.
Eric's got his hand up.
Oh, Eric, go right ahead.
I'm trying to figure out where my hand goes here on the camera. I, the other question I had, Melinda, was complaints. I, I see they had set hours. I think it was seven hours a day or whatever, five days a week. Um, for you to go in and pay your payments or whatever, but do you keep track of the number of complaints if there are any, not assuming there are. About M Park enforcement or anything to do with M Park?
Oh, yes. Um, I am basically C C'd on most complaints. Uh, we try to route our complaints through a online complaint form. And through Bremerton one app. So, um, parking complaints, I get to see most of those. Um, I do have my number listed on the parking pages. And so whenever anyone does have a complaint, they do reach out to me. Um, and, um, you know, now in the last four years, um. I would just say, you know, we get a lot of complaints, but you really do have to vet those, um, because sometimes they're. Um, you know, maybe not necessarily as you would first, uh, you know, first glance, you hear somebody saying I am being targeted. But, um, for example, I, I had one of those recently, but the situation is we had one person reporting. Uh, illegal parking on the street. Another person in the same neighborhood, it was the owner of those vehicles. That person says I'm being targeted by M Park and M Park just is simply following protocol. Um, if they get a report of a vehicle that's in violation and they have a plate associated or a vehicle description and a location, they're simply going to go out and investigate. If they find a violation, they'll issue a citation. If they don't find a violation, they're probably just going to issue a warning or maybe it's just informational leaflet for that person. Um, you know, if they suspect there really is anything wrong, but that's an example of one of the situations that they, um, you know, do face. Um, so it's really hard to take, um, a complaint just on face value. Um, but having been here now for years and listening to all sorts of community responses. Um. Uh, whenever I, I hear any complaints, um, you know, I take them seriously. Um, I can say that in this, um, version of the agreement. Um, we are trying to make some administrative changes that will help meet expectations within a budget. Um, you know, the other aspect of some of the complaints, um, you know, are that people expect in part to be. On site and enforcing maybe twenty four hours a day. Um, or in a location that is getting a lot of violations. And so you really kind of have to peel back the layers whenever you have a complaint and look at the situation and the parking situation. Um, there are some things where, um, you know. Certainly I've said, hey, this is not per your contract and it's not per our expectations. Let's change this. And I have only received really, uh, good responses, um, from M Park and from the M Park stack, um, when I've asked for those things. Um, I actually, um, you know, in the last four years, especially as we're going through, um. Covid and implementing new, new equipment and software and processes. Um, which is a lot of change for any organization. I, I found just a lot of good feedback and a lot of knowledge of our area from that staff. Um, and it, you know, took some time for me to peel back the layers because complicated, you know, because parking on first glance seems simple. Um, and ultimately it is. I mean, there are certainly things that are more complicated than parking enforcement, but, um, you know, it isn't as simple as the first glance view. I just have to say that. And so. Um, you know, I always kind of take it on the case by case and I'll look at it. Um, and I, I really don't have, um, you know. Any areas where I think in park is, um, you know, in breach or massively deficient. Um, you know, I occasionally will hear thank yous, uh, that their team gets. Um, it's not an area of service that the city provides where we're going to hear a lot of accolades, but occasionally they happen. Um, so it's one of those things that is a little, uh, you know, but not perfect, but, uh, I'm not finding any. Gross breaches or even willful, you know, if I ask, they will, they jump through every hoop I put out there.
Okay. Fair enough. Yeah, I, I don't expect we get a lot of accolades about our parking enforcement, uh. The nature of the, of the beast reminds me of those cable shows everyone's while I'm search, channel surfing, you see the Detroit, uh, meter reader shows and all that. Hopefully we don't have quote unquote customers that react in the way that some of those people do, but. Makes for interesting television. So, uh, thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure if we're doing a two and a half year. Contract, obviously you're most familiar with it, that you're satisfied with the service that you're getting. And it sounds like. You're making some tweaks in the contract to make sure it does meet the city's needs. So thank you for doing that.
So thank.
And I don't know if this is necessarily, maybe we're talking, but maybe we'll talk later when it comes. Did we already approve the second vehicle that's getting, that's going to replace the Y R S?
Yes, that was.
Already approved. Yeah, because the R S is discontinued, right?
The Y R S, Y R S will stay. I believe we have, we have not brought that.
The first vehicle.
The twenty four vehicle might be in there, but we'll consider if it's going to be replaced. The go for is in the budget.
Okay, my misunderstanding. I thought that you were saying it was, um, due to be replaced in twenty four.
It's in, it's on the list for twenty four, but if it's not, if it doesn't meet all the criteria, we will not move forward to replacing the Y R S. It's scheduled to be a replaced vehicle in twenty four.
All right, all right. Then that's not even germane to this topic, so we'll talk about that another time. I don't have any more questions. Um. Yeah, send it on up is what I say. Send it on up to study session. Um, Eric, are you in agreement with that? Good to go?
Except for if I wanted a job with M Park, I wouldn't fit in that Y R S, just saying. It's, it's a tight fit. Melinda, I'm, I'm six foot four. I, I don't think I'll fit in Y R S, sorry.
I have a friend that works for M Park and he's not a tiny man either. So yeah, I think he is, I don't, yeah, it's the red haired fellow that works for M Park. At least he's, I think he, he still does. Anyway.
Leave you the visual of Hans and myself in that car going to Renton.
Right, like a clown car.
Your mind of the, you know, the frugal nature of finance, so.
Oh, my goodness.
When it was our car, so.
All right, well, that reminds me of a dad joke. Um, how many elephants can you fit in a Y R S? Uh, two in the front and two in the back. I don't know. Uh, all right, moving right along. Thanks for laughing at that.
Oh. Laughing because it's funny or?
Yeah, it was so bad.
It was pretty bad.
Uh. Well, how do you know that, um, elephants are at, uh, city council meeting? There's a Y R S parked out front. I don't know. I'm trying here. I'm trying.
Yeah, this stuff's going way over my head. I'm not understanding it, so.
You know what? That means that I either, um, completely failed or completely succeeded at the dad jokes. I don't know which one it is. It could be both. Um, all right. So is there any other general business that any of the council members want to chat about for parking investment of finance? Investment parking finance. I think I said it backwards. No, I said it right.
Oh, just real quick, uh, all the banking crisis remind me, Mike, uh, who, who do we keep our accounts with? We usually have one big commercial one and then we try to put it locally. Uh, it used to be Kitsap Bank and Bank of America, but that was many years ago that I knew that information, I think.
Yeah, you're correct. We actually, yeah, we had some certificates deposit with Kitsap, uh, uh, Kitsap Bank locally years ago, um, no longer. So we are with Bank of America. Um, that is our concentration bank.
Okay.
And we'll do a, uh, in the next, so I was gonna raise my hand, just kind of talk about next month's, uh, finance committee, kind of what's on your agenda, what's coming your way. One day we'll talk about the bank crisis. Our funds are protected. Uh, we have, there's collateralization with government bonds. So what, when banks hold our money, what they're required to do. And the protection and where we're at, like I said, we're a bank of America, um, fully collateralized. So, um, give it, give some information about that. And then also talk about fund balance. Where we're at would be closing, closing up. Um, I don't want to share too much on the spot today, but, uh, and next month, talking about kind of where we landed with twenty twenty two. Where we're building into twenty twenty three, uh, into twenty three, looking at twenty fourth budget, talk about some of the things I think the council discussed, look at the budget calendar, um, kind of, I think where we settled last week. With what the calendar looks like, um, and just kind of anticipate, uh, anticipate for that, or the April meeting.
Okay, uh, will you be able to get, um, an agenda out twice day ahead of time with some information, uh, for next month? So we can have a little bit of time to, because this, this sounds like it's going to be a little heavy, so I want to be prepared.
Yeah, if we have, if we have some numbers that we'll be able to put together, okay, we, I don't, they're all familiar. Yeah, if we have, if we have some numbers that we'll be able to put together, okay, we, I don't, we're all familiar with the master spreadsheets and the budget, we'll have something like that. Uh, you'll be able to look at and take it and walk through. Um, it's now the plan. And there'll be a documented share with the bank, um, banking protection, so. Some really good guidance on that. I'll put in the packet.
Great. Okay, counselors, any other questions?
I'm gonna make a suggestion. Um, I'm a real fan of the shared docs. So even if you wanted to start, you know, working on the agenda as you guys build it and just keep it shared. And then we don't have to worry about even looking for it. It's always in the same place or to look for an email to find it. So, and uh, you know, every time you email out a PDF or Word document, you create that many copies of it. So I T would love us if we were uh, saving server space.
And then, uh, and to go along with that, I think um, to have a final publish, published one for records, you don't have a final published until. Before the meeting. And what do you think about that, Mike?
I will get familiar with shared documents. So, um, uh, my uh, my fifteen-year-old, my twelve-year-old probably run laps around me when it comes to like Google Docs. And all those.
It's easy. It's just like word.
Every, everybody says it's easy and then I try to like print them or save them or share them and sharing links and I just get all itchy inside, so. Um, yeah, no, we can definitely come up with putting something together. Um, that's a shared agenda. And and also on the flip side for council, if you guys have things you want to discuss, it's your committee, send to us so we could add to the agenda as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, Michael?
I could just say tentative until it's approved and I could say final or something, whether it's in the, in the uh, document title or just right in the. Kind of the heading, so.
Sounds good to me.
And I, I think I've got it. I've, I've hired a new person. Today was a tricky thing, juggling some stuff with work, but I think I've got somebody who's gonna be able to cover. This time period, so I'm not distracted.
Yeah, he didn't miss much, just a bunch of dad jokes.
Yeah.
Oh, they were awesome.
And I know it was mostly gonna be dad jokes. I might have just called in and said.
We, we didn't know how much discussion was gonna be on the M Park contracts. We want to give you enough time, but uh, we. Maybe filled most of the air with just noise now, but, but yeah, it's all, yeah. We'll work on the shared document, figure out how that works.
That'd be great.
All attached to it and to be able to see it. I will say the finance committee agendas are pretty boring until like last minute when I get phone calls. Um, this one we knew was coming, so.
Yep, actually, Mike, you might ask I T to uh, come up with some training because. I'm not saying your staff, but there's definitely staff that don't really have a grasp of shared docs either, so.
I, I would guess so, yeah. Not, not our format here at the city. We don't like draft.
It saves money.
Engineers do, but.
It saves money.
It saves money, it saves, saves.
I, I understand. I try to chase engineering budgets and they, they relabeled, they keep the old copy, new copy, new copy, new copy, new copy, all the way with dates. And then you're trying to work, three people working off three different ones. So I understand, it'd be, it'd be nice. Tim Seibold is pretty good with some shared stuff that we do, so maybe I'll reach out to her, so.
Yeah, I really like that. Thank you, Michael, for suggesting that because I think we need to move into that. Uh, it was a hard, it was hard when the school district moved into it when I was, um, I've been, you know, secretary there for years and years over a decade and uh. Uh, when they moved to Google Docs away from Microsoft Suite, it was, I did a little grumbling in the beginning. There's always grumbling with transition, but. Now it's so adept, like, it's just intuitive and uh.
Pay for, so, you know.
Yep, I mean, we're already paying for it, so, yeah. Good.
Okay, so I gotta tell you, there are some drawbacks to that. I'm just listening patiently, whatever. So I assume the city would be using OneDrive?
Yes.
Yeah, so uh, you'll find this out, Mike, if you don't know this already, but in OneDrive. So everybody has their own folder, right? And it's basically extension of their desktop. When that person leaves, OneDrive does not back, it only keeps it backed up for thirty days or whatever your I T policy is. And then after that, those piles and folders all go away. So you have to be careful because we're subject to all these records requirements, so it's not as simple as, you know. Having something on your desktop and right-clicking and sharing this folder with the three of us or wherever, you've got some um. Public records requirements and uh, records retention thing. It's, it's not as easy as it sounds, so.
That's a valid point, too. Well, no, and and my workaround for that, you know, like when I, like when I left the school district, I'm still an employee, but just in case. Uh, our workaround was to have my teacher that I was working with make a copy of all my files that were shared. Uh, because you can make a copy of everything and it comes onto another drive, but that still assumes that she's gonna be around forever, right? So, um, valid points. Alright, um, any other business today? Ladies and gentlemen, okay. Well, I, I'd like to propose we close this meeting down. I thought it was gonna be way quicker than it was. This was still a nice quick meeting, three thirty-six. You're just giving us a break this time because we're gonna be longer next time, huh?
A, a, it depends on how fast you digest the information in the next meeting. It could be a quick.
Well, I wanna, I wanna just kind of throw out there, if we're talking about, um. You know, taking a look at our budget and where we ended up with uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, we're gonna take a look at uh, talking about our, um. Our uh, our banking security, things like that. I mean, we may go over an hour. Uh, and I hate to say that, uh, my fellow counselors, but we may, we may need to prepare to be on a little bit longer than an hour. Next time to get it all done. I know we like to hit, I like to hit that hour mark, but. Um, I'll make sure to put that in, in my notes that uh, we might be a little bit longer than an hour.
We are happy to be here as long as you want us to be here, so we, I like.
About three, three and a half hours, does that work for y'all?
Works for me.
No, please, no, no. But I'm assuming it's gonna be about an hour and a half to an hour. I mean, I'm assuming that's about how long.
We'll get real technical in the finance world and we'll see how fat long it lasts, so.
Well.
You and I start paying out when. Going into, you know, capitalization thresholds and stuff.
Okay, alright, try me. Well, um, then I'd like to close the meeting for today and I'll see y'all. Next month, the next meeting will be April twenty-fifth at three P M here on Zoom. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Have a good day.